What we're gonna do, I looked up something on this I found was interesting. A couple of sentences here. Well, it was actually written in 1799. And I don't know when this took place, but there was a Reverend H. P. Scott. He was a missionary to an India. And at the time, there were very primitive tribes there. And when he was preaching to them, he met a large party of warriors. And they surrounded him with spears pointed at him. And he expected to die, so he took out his violin, it says, and breathed the prayer, and began to sing, preach, sing the words, "Let every kindred, every tribe..." And he opened his eyes, and there stood the warriors, some in tears, every spear of Lord. Scott spent the next two years evangelizing the tribe. So it has a place in missionary history, too. So, do you know the song?
I do.
Okay.
(Singing) All hail the power of Jesus' name, where angels' prostrate fall. Bring forth the royal diadem, and crown him Lord of all. Bring forth the royal diadem, and crown him Lord of all. In the chosen sea of Israel's grace, he ransom from the all. Hail him who saves you by his grace, and crown him Lord of all. Hail him who saves you by his grace, and crown him Lord of all. Let every kindred, every tribe, mourn his terrestrial fall. To him all majesty astruck, and crown him Lord of all. To him all majesty astruck, and crown him Lord of all. Oh wrath with yonder sacred throng, we at his feet may fall. We'll join the everlasting song, and crown him Lord of all. We'll join the everlasting song, and crown him Lord of all.
Beautiful. The second we're gonna do is, "The Church is One Foundation." I wanna point out something to you. Look at the third verse on "The Church is One Foundation." Though, and we'll start from the beginning. "Go with a scornful wonder, and see her sore oppress..." Talking, we all have the church, the one foundation. "...by schisms, rent asunder..." By, and it looks like "her," but if you look at the rest of the word, "parisies." I'm just pointing that out, because every, when I started practicing this, and you're talking about "see her sore oppressed" on the first line, and then you think it's "her" there, and you go, "parisies." And it's quite good. So it's actually "parisies." The way it's divided, it's hard to make that work, but "parisies." And you'll make the mistake, even though I just told you.
There's always more preachers that say it, "parisies."
(Singing) The church is one foundation, is Jesus Christ her Lord. She is his new creation, by water and the word. From heaven he came and started, to be his holy bride. And his own body he ordered, and for her life he died. He let from every nation, yet one more on the end. Her charter of salvation, one Lord, one faith, one prayer. One holy engine blesses, our day, one holy food. And to one host she presses, with every grace in due. Go with a scornful wonder, and see her sore oppress. By schisms, rent asunder, by herasies distress. Yes, taste their watchar keeping, their pride goes up along. And soon the light of weeping shall be the mourner's song. May toil and tribulation, and tumult of her roar. She waits the consolation of peace forevermore. Till with the vision glorious, her longing hearts are blessed. And so great church victorious, shall be the church at rest. Yet she honored her union, with God the three in one. And this sweet communion, with those whose rest is one. O happy ones and holy, Lord give us grace that we, like them the weak and holy, one heart may dwell with thee.
The third one, "In Christ there is no east or west." I've always liked this song. It comes from Galatians 3:28. And Galatians 3:28 says, and I'm not sure what version it says, "There is no longer Jew or Greek, there is no longer slave or free, there is no longer male and female, for all of you are one in Christ." And I thought that fit with today's, tonight's lesson very well.
(Singing) In Christ there is no east or west, in him no south or north. But one great fellowship of love, throughout the whole wide earth. In him shall true hearts everywhere, their high communion fire. His service is the golden cord, close finding new mankind. Join hands then, brothers of the faith, whatever your race may be. Who serves my Father as a son, is surely fit to me. In Christ now meet both east and west, in him meet south and north. O Christ, these souls are one in him, throughout the whole wide earth.
I wanted to hear everybody actually tell us.
That's nice.
It's a nice job.
It's nice to sit up there. You get to hear everybody say, "Do you?"
All right, well, let me pray, and then the kids can... Father, we thank you so much for the privilege and the opportunity to gather together again with these dear folks, and to open your word and study it. Thank you for the worship that we have through music and through the studying of your word and by being together. I ask, Lord, now that you would be with us as we seek to honor you, gather together with one another, learning more and growing closer to you in Jesus' name. So we're in Acts, chapter 15. You can go ahead and be opening there, we're heading that way. But tonight is about conflict resolution. It's a necessary skill, because since the fall in Genesis, chapter 3, conflict has been a part of the human experience. Sometimes you don't even need two people to have conflict. You can have conflict internally. It reminds me of, have you guys seen that movie Facing the Giants? There's a scene in there where one of the characters, Brock, is told to do a bear crawl, which in football, you get up on your toes, and you have to keep your knees off the ground, and you're up, you're like this. And they're bear crawling, and they have somebody on his back. And the coach is trying to get him to stop being so negative and to believe in themselves. So he blindfolds him and asks him to go 50 yards, I think it was, and bear crawl it with this kid on his back, with this other kid on his back. And he's doing it. And he's, he's coaching him on, and he's cheering him on. And at one point, Brock, the character, he says, "I'm out of strength," or "I'm about out of strength." And the coach says, "Then renegotiate with your body and find more strength." That's kind of that inner conflict. By the way, Brock ends up doing 100 yards in the movie. But sometimes, yeah, conflict is internal. But most of the time, when we're talking about conflict resolution, we're talking about conflict between people, because any time two or more people interact, there's the possibility of conflict. Neighbors, coworkers, friends, family, maybe a disagreement about property lines, it may be different opinions about a business deal, it might be struggles within a marriage, but conflict is unavoidable. It happens. But we can learn and apply biblical principles to resolve that conflict and move forward in unity. And I think it's important just to say this upfront, unity does not mean without conflict. It means that we are able to work through conflict and stay unified and stay together. So that's the application lesson from the Jerusalem Council. If you'll remember, last week, we covered the conflict that had been stirring within the church. This conflict, I said, was soteriological, which is that fancy word meaning it concerns salvation and how people are saved. And the basic conflict is centered on the means of salvation. Was it faith, or was it works? Was it grace, or was it merit, something that you earned? And this theological lesson is the lesson we can learn from the Jerusalem Council. You see, many believers that had come from a Jewish background thought that the law of Moses was still in effect and still needed to be kept. And there's little doubt that this was influenced from the unbelieving Jews. So in Jerusalem, there was outside pressure and inside pressure for them to maintain the law. Those that were coming into Christianity from Gentile backgrounds would now have a great burden thrust upon them as they played catch-up to learn and keep the law. So this conflict had been stirring and had now come to a boil. Paul and Barnabas had been leading many of the Gentiles to faith, and then some of these Judaizers had come along saying that, "Well, that's great, but now they need to be circumcised, and they need to follow the Jewish laws." And so we find Paul and Barnabas now in Jerusalem after being sent by the Antioch Church to deal with this issue. And now the issue has come before the apostles and the elders. So we're gonna pick up in verse 6, and we're gonna read down through verse 21. It says, "The apostles and elders gathered to consider this matter. After there had been much debate, Peter stood up and said to them, 'Brothers, you are aware that in the early days, God made a choice among you, that by my mouth the Gentiles would hear the gospel message and believe. And God, who knows the heart, bore witness to them by giving them the Holy Spirit, just as he did to us. He made no distinction between us and them, cleansing their hearts by faith. Now then, why are you testing God by putting a yoke on the disciples' necks, that neither our ancestors nor we have been able to bear? On the contrary, we believe that we are saved through grace of the Lord Jesus, in the same way they are.'" The whole assembly became silent and listened as Barnabas and Paul described all the signs and wonders God had done through them among the Gentiles. After they stopped speaking, James responded, "Brothers, listen to me. Simeon, also Simon or Peter, has reported how God first intervened to take from the Gentiles a people for his name." And the words of the prophets agree with this. It is as it is written, "After these things, I will return and rebuild David's fallen temple. I will rebuild the ruins and set it up again, so that the rest of humanity may seek the Lord. Even all the Gentiles who are called by my name declares the Lord, who makes these things known from long ago. Therefore, in my judgment, we should not cause difficulties for those among the Gentiles who turn to God. But instead, we should write to them, to abstain from things polluted from idols, from sexuality, from eating anything that has been strangled, and from blood. For since ancient times, Moses has had those who proclaim him in every city and every Sabbath day, is read aloud in the synagogues." And so tonight, we're gonna look at this. I'm gonna break it down into three divisions based on the three different speakers. You have Peter, then you have Paul/Barnabas, and then you have James. And so we're gonna look at it from that standpoint. And as we get started, we're gonna look at Peter. Peter gives us the beginning of how this happens. So if you look at verses 6 and 7, it kind of sets the stage. "After much debate, Peter's gonna stand..." But I don't know if you've ever been in a meeting with much debate. I have. You know, debate is actually a very important part of settling matters. Robert's Rules of Order are meant to provide a mechanism for good debate. So if you're ever in a public meeting that follows Robert's Rules of Order, there is a mechanism for debate. And so if we're gonna debate something, and Ray wants to speak for it, and Barry wants to speak against it, we have to give both of them the same amount of time and the opportunity. And then if somebody else wants to speak, we have to go back and forth across the issue until there's no more speakers and until some other things happen. And what that does is it provides an opportunity for the voting members to get intellectual, clear, honest opinions or views on the issue before they make a decision. They deserve that. But sadly, in our culture, debate is usually viewed as fighting that gets us nowhere. And that can happen, but it doesn't have to. And so that's kind of where they are. There's been this debating back and forth. And so now Peter stands up to address the crowd. Now, this would be a moment. Peter, the man who was the first to say that Jesus is the Christ, the man who walked on water with Jesus, the man who saw the transfigured Christ, the man who was part of the inner circle, the three closest to Jesus of the disciples, the man who is generally identified as the leader of the disciples, the man who cut off an ear of one of the guards sent to arrest Jesus, the man who denied three times that he even knew Jesus, the man who ran to the empty tomb, the man who was restored by Jesus and given the commission and the command to feed my lambs, shepherd my sheep, and to feed my sheep, is about to stand and speak. This Peter stands before the crowd to speak, and he reminds them that God decided it was by his mouth first that the Gentiles would hear the gospel and believe. When he says that right there, he says, "God made a choice among you, that by my mouth the Gentiles would hear that message and believe." He's referencing Acts, chapter 10 and 11. Remember the Cornelius encounter where Peter has a vision with the sheep coming down with the clean and the unclean animals? And he sees the salvation coming to the Gentiles? He's reminding them of how this started. It's the beginning of it. And then he makes three observations and a clear declaration. The first observation that he makes is found there in verse 8. "God knows the heart, bore witness to them by giving them the Holy Spirit." So he observes that God gave them the Holy Spirit, just like the Jews. They displayed evidence of the Holy Spirit working in their lives. The second thing he mentions is found in verse 9. "He made no distinction between us and them, cleansing their hearts by faith, just like the Jews, forgiving sin and cleansing was by faith, not by works." You know, circumcision is an outward procedure that has both practical and spiritual applications. Cleanliness and an identification as a Jew. Cleansing the heart is internal, being made by faith. And so when he shares this, he say it, that that's the same for the Jew and the Gentile. He recognizes that God had cleansed their heart by their faith. And then lastly, he makes an observation about the inability to keep the law. Just like the Jews, the law was excessively burdensome to them. It was an excessive burden, you okay? An excessive burden to the Jews, because they couldn't keep it. Their ancestors couldn't keep it. He said, "If we can't keep it, why are we gonna put it on them?" And so he observes all of that, and then he makes this statement found in verse 11. It's succinct and assertive. He says, "We believe that we are saved through the grace of the Lord Jesus, in the same way they are." Now, if we had the time, I would love to dive into the phrasing here, because he actually turns the tables. He doesn't say, "They are saved like we are." He says, "We are saved like they are." That's a very interesting change of phrasing, and I just don't have the time to go into it tonight, but it's a very, very interesting phrasing. But Peter used his time to remind them about the beginning of Gentile salvation. "It was by his mouth, and he saw evidence of Gentile salvation. Jew and Gentile alike are only saved by faith in Jesus Christ." After Peter makes this statement, the crowd gets quiet, and this allows Paul and Barnabas to share about the current happenings of Gentile salvation. So when we get to Paul and Barnabas, we see what they're observing. The crowd listens as they give a report. Now, Luke only gives one verse to this time, I think because there's a wealth of information already recorded for us so far. But there are a couple of things I wanna point out here as it relates to this particular issue before the apostles and the elders. The report seems to focus on signs and wonders. It says that they, the crowd listened as Barnabas and Paul described all the signs and wonders God had done through them among the Gentiles. Now, remember, the New Testament hasn't been written yet. The need for signs and wonders for validation was still there for the Jews. I've talked about this at great length back in chapter 14, when they were in Iconium, and how the signs and the wonders were primarily for the Jewish believers. And so at this point, this is important, because they are hearing about the signs and wonders that God is doing. And so for them, there's no denying that God is working among the Gentiles. Paul and Barnabas are seeing signs and wonders. Peter has seen evidence of the Holy Spirit and the cleansing of their heart. And so all of that is making a case here. But then he says, "among the Gentiles." This is a continuation of the work. It's a reminder that what Peter started, they are now continuing. If you go back to chapter 11, and I started kind of building this up till now, you can see that Peter's encounter with Cornelius leads directly to the church being planted in Antioch and formed, which leads directly to Paul and Barnabas's missionary journey, which has now come to completion. This is a continuation of the work that they have been doing. God was working then, evidenced by Peter. God is doing it now, evidenced by Paul and Barnabas. And so Peter makes a case based on the past, Paul and Barnabas make a case based on the observation of present events. And now comes James, who's gonna kind of tie all of this together, bring it to a resolution or an agreement, to say. Now, to understand James's message, we need a couple of background details and a few contextual reminders to sharpen us up. First, and perhaps the most important thing here, is to identify this James. Now, this is not the apostle James. We know that, because he was killed in chapter 12. But this is James, the brother, half-brother of Jesus, who is the writer, also the book of James. He had become a pillar of the Jerusalem church and really would become the primary leader once the apostles had left. So once the apostles leave the city, James has kind of left there as the main leader. Now, it's interesting, James was not an early convert. John, chapter 7, verse 5, it says, "For even his brothers did not believe in him." So James didn't believe, and if you might be able to understand, but there could be a reference to James's conversion in 1 Corinthians, where Paul talks about an encounter James had with the risen Christ, that he would have been a late convert. It wasn't until after Jesus's death, burial, and resurrection that he would have come to understand that Jesus is the Christ. So James is a great example of the difficulty that Jews had transitioning to being Christians. And that's a struggle we still see today. Now, why is that? Well, Judaism is a very complex mixture of race, religion, and nationality. And what I mean by that is the identity of a Jew is fundamentally tied to all three parts. You can't, you can't pull one part out. It's a race, it's a religion, and it's a nationality. Now, think about this. Well, first off, I encourage you to take a deep dive into that. That's a very complex, complicated thing. One of the reasons why Israel still exists to this day. But if you think about what's happening at this period of time for them, the Jews did not have the nation Israel. They were under Roman control. And in many ways, their racial recognition was in the midst of chaos because of the Hellenistic influences that were coming in. More and more Jewish people were becoming Greek in their culture and in their thought processes. Really, all they had left were their religious traditions. And here we have somebody telling them that those don't even matter. You know, in our current state, Israel is a nation, but both the racial and the religious practices are miniscule at best. There is no temple in Jerusalem. They can't practice their faith as described in Scripture. And if you ask most any Jewish person, they don't even know what tribe they belong to, because most of that's been lost over the generations. So this is a, this is a complicated thing that's tied closely to how they identified themselves for thousands of years leading up to this. Another detail to remember and that we need to be reminded of is the need to connect this to the Old Testament. Christianity comes from the Old Covenant, not as a replacement for it. Remember in Matthew 5:17, Jesus says, "Don't think that I came to abolish the law or the prophets. I did not come to abolish, but to fulfill." And so when we, that needed to be tied to that for the understanding of the Jews. A decision related to just the experiences of Peter, Paul, and Barnabas would be flimsy and questionable, because the Bible is not a record of man's experiences with God. The Bible is God's revelation of himself to mankind. And therefore, we must base truth not on experience, but on Scripture. And this decision would have lasting impacts on the future of the church. James is very wise to consider all of these aspects as he stands to speak and offer a path forward in unity. And as he speaks, he does two very specific things. First off, he speaks the truth. Look at verse 13. James responded, "Brothers, listening to me, Simeon, or Simon," that's Peter, "has reported how God first intervened to take from the Gentiles a people for his name." And the words of the prophets agree with this. It is written, "After these things, I will return and rebuild David's fallen temple. I will rebuild its ruins and set it up again, so that the rest of humanity may seek the Lord. Even all the Gentiles, or who are called by my name, declares the Lord, who makes these things known from long ago. Therefore, in my judgment, we should not cause difficulties for those among the Gentiles who turn to God." He's picking up where Peter had left off, and he connects it to the prophets here by quoting Amos, chapter 9, part of Amos, chapter 9. So he's making the case that God has always planned to have for himself a people that included the Gentiles. to have for himself a people that included the Gentiles. And then in verse 19, he agrees with Peter and Paul and Barnabas that the truth of salvation by faith, and there's no need for these extra burdens to be placed on them. We're going to see that later in the letter that they send, that this is a major decision that sets or solidifies a major doctrine of the Christian faith. Salvation is by faith alone and Christ alone. So he speaks that truth. He said, "God has always had this plan. And this is what it is." So he's not backtracking on the truth. He's holding the truth up. But there is a concession. And this is very important. Verses 20 and 21 are very, very important because some people have incorrectly assumed that these are stipulations or requirements for salvation. But that's not true. Read it closely. "These are strongly suggested considerations for the Jewish brothers." And what do I mean by that? Well, these four things that he mentions are tripping points. They're not really the big issues, but these are the points that tend to be catalyst for offense. These are the tripping spots. You know, most of us know how to walk, but sometimes our feet get in the way. You know, this is something that trips them up a lot. We're not going to dive into these four specific things because next week, when we write the letter, we're actually going to talk quite a bit about those four things. But here's what I want you to get from right now. The big takeaway for right now is that James is asking the Gentile believers to be sensitive to the struggle that Jewish people are having in this transition. He's saying, "Salvation is by faith alone and Christ alone. But consider your Jewish brothers and sisters, and I'm asking you to abstain from these things." Simply put, this is not about rights, but about what is right. Paul goes into great detail about this in 1 Corinthians chapter 8 and 9, when he's talking about meat sacrificed to idols. "Exercising your rights when it's detrimental to the well-being of another person opposes the very nature of Christianity." What's the nature of Christianity? That Jesus, who is God, humbled himself to enter creation and even go to the cross to die for us, an ultimate display of selflessness. If Jesus had acted like some of the Christians today, I'd see him stomping his foot going, "I don't have to do that. I have the right not to do that." It's not about rights, it's about doing what is right. You may very well have the right, but it ain't right. So what James is doing here is he's offering this concession to say, "Look, yes, this is the truth, but in application, we might want to be considerate of other people." This balancing act is difficult. Upholding the truth while at the same time desiring not to be purposely offensive, that can be some deep murky waters. It's complicated. I'm not saying that it's easy. The letter that they drafted is in many ways a masterclass in how to try and find that balance. And so we're going to get into that next week. As they write this letter that they are going to send out to them, they are very clear. Salvation is by faith in Jesus Christ, not by works. But at the same time, they make a very good case that we need to be considerate of those that this has been hard on, and to think about other people. I think Paul takes this message to heart because later on, he writes, "If it causes a brother to stumble, I won't do it." So as we close, I want to make a couple of comments. I want to ask a couple of questions. I'm going to lead us in a prayer of commitment about what we've learned. So first, the comments. This council was not the final statement on this issue, but it is a major step in defining salvation by grace through faith in Jesus Christ alone. This is a big view. This is a big moment. Secondly, the comments by James will have major implications in years to come because he is endorsing a new understanding of what it means to be the people of God. This has eschatological implications, end times implications. Because up to this point, when you say the people of God, the Israelites said, "That's us." But now, he has opened this door that shows us that every tribe, every nation, every language, not just Israel, all of them will be part of the gathered people of God. So when you're reading the book of Revelation, every tribe, every nation, every tongue is represented. That's what he's alluding to here. This is going to have some major implications down the road. And so now for our questions. What are you depending on for salvation? We must have a very clear grasp on the truth that salvation is by faith in Jesus. What do we have faith in? That the death, burial, and resurrection of Jesus is the completed work and all that's needed for us to be saved. In my mind, I like to think of it this way. If I'm standing in a courtroom and God's the judge up there, Satan's at the prosecutor's table and he lays the facts out, and I have absolutely no justification for what I've done. I'm sitting there guilty as guilty can be. And the judge says, "How do you plead?" I'm going to say, "Jesus," because that's all I've got. And I expect to hear, "Father, that one's on me. I've got this one." That's what it means to have faith in the completed work of Christ. It's not how good I am. It's not how much money I give. It's not how many people I've helped. It's not any of those things. Those are good things and we ought to do those things. But what saves me is faith in Jesus and His completed work. So what are you depending on for salvation? This is a major, major moment. And number two, how does your life demonstrate a compassionate attitude toward those who are struggling or those who are far from God? What areas is God convicting you about in how you live your faith in front of other people? I'm going to be honest with you. This is a hard one for me. I struggle in this daily, and I think that's why I take so much energy in looking at what is going on right now. But I think the last couple of years, last four years in our nation have made this extremely apparent that we need to be evaluating how we live out our faith in front of others. And so with those two questions of mine, I'm going to lead us in a closing prayer. If you've never made a commitment to the gospel, to embrace the gospel and trust the gospel alone, you have an opportunity to do that. And be thinking, how can you live in a way that is mindful of those who have not yet understood the gospel? To make commitments to both. So let's pray. Father, we thank you for your word. We thank you for the truth that is revealed in it. And Lord, tonight, we learn from your text, your word, that salvation is by faith alone and Christ alone. And Lord, if we're putting our faith and our trust in anything else, may you convict us and help us to repent of that and to trust only in you for our salvation. And Lord, as we think about how we live out that faith in front of others, may we be mindful that we don't send the wrong messages. Your grace is not a license to sin freely. And your grace is not something that we can take credit for arrogantly. So Lord, may our behavior, may our attitude, may the way we interact with those around us demonstrate what you would have them see in our lives that would draw them closer to you. Lord, this is complicated and we need your help to do it. Guide us. We make a commitment to follow you step by step as we try to reach this community around us. Lord, there's people outside these doors who are far from you. There's people outside these doors who've been hurt by the behavior of some Christians. And Lord, may we be a representation of you to them. And we pray all this in Jesus's name. Amen.